Madam Clerk, would you take the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Judice?
Here.
Councilmember Hollinsworth Adams?
Here.
Councilmember Stafford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Elward?
Here.
All City Councilmembers are present.
Thank you. We're going to move to item number three, which is the presentation.
We have Logan Pitts from Senator Bill Dodd's office here to present.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers. I am here tonight on behalf of State Senator Dodd to wish a fond farewell to Councilmember Pam Stafford. And while he'd love to get out of it, also City Manager Darren Jenkins. I've been a public servant for a long time myself. Senator Dodd was in local government. We know how hard that work is, and we appreciate all your years of service. And I have a certificate of recognition from the Senator for both of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Why not?
I do believe we have Andrea Kraut, District Director, for the County of Sonoma Supervisor David Rabbit to present as well.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Andrea Kraut. I'm here on behalf of Supervisor David Rabbit, representing the Second District. Supervisor Rabbit sends his regards. Unfortunately, he suffered from an injury and is unable to be here this evening. But I am here on his behalf to as well send a fond farewell to Councilmember Pam Stafford, who's been an incredible partner for the County of Sonoma throughout her tenure. I would just like to say, on behalf of Supervisor Rabbit, you've heard him mention this before, but it takes a lot of courage for someone to step up and throw their hat into the ring to serve the public, to be an elected official. You open yourself up to a myriad of different circumstances and sometimes some feedback that can be challenging at times. But you have demonstrated such grace and kindness and tenacity in serving your constituency. You've served throughout a really tremendous experience, whether it be the Great Recession, floods, fire, earthquakes, and now drought. But thank you so much on behalf of the constituents of the South County and the friendly city of Runner Park. Thank you so much for your service, and we will miss you in the Second District office. Thank you very much.
We also have Katerina Judice, representing Congressman Thompson.
Hello, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you so much for allowing me to present these two items that I have on behalf of Congressman Mike Thompson. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here with us tonight because he's in Washington, DC. So for Darren, I have a special certificate of congressional recognition for all your years as City Manager. Thank you so much. And for Councilmember Stafford, I have a congressional record statement. And this is very, very special because the Congressman has written this statement about all of your hard work and your service and dedication to Runner Park, and it is read into the history of the United States. So thank you very much.
I apologize, Mayor. I don't know if there's anyone else. Please approach if you are.
Good evening, everyone. Honored to be here as your new Assembly Member for this. And very much looking forward to working with all of you, helping to swear in new Councilmembers later. Congratulating our mayor for a great year. But right now, I want to join in the recognition of two outstanding public servants who are ending their careers in one capacity, but I'm sure continuing in others. And that is Councilmember Pam Stafford, for your tremendous years of service as well. Yeah, absolutely. And Darren Jenkins. So I also. These are my first certificates. So let's get up here and have a photo, for sure.
Thank you so much. Feels like Christmas, early Christmas, huh? Well, you all deserve it. We're going to move to our Department Head briefing, I'm sure.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to public comment at this moment.
I have public comments for item 10B. I don't know if the council wants to take them now or later.
We can wait until then. So we're going to move to our consent calendar.
Mayor, before you accept a motion, I'm conflicted on 6L. I lease property at Summer Village.
Thank you.
I'd like to move that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of 6L at the moment.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
The following motion is for the adoption of the consent calendar with the exception of item 6L. Councilmember Judice abstaining. Councilmember Hollinsworth Adams?
No, I can vote on this one. 6L, I think.
Councilmember Judice?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollinsworth Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Elward?
Yes.
Motion passes by a 5-0.
Thank you. Now we're going to move to item 6L.
I'd like to move that we pass 6L. I'll second that.
Okay, the following motion is for the adoption of consent item 6L. Councilmember Judice abstaining. Councilmember Hollinsworth Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Elward?
Yes.
Motion passes by a 4-01 vote.
Thank you. We're going to move to our Standing Committee report. The first one will be the Sonoma Clean Power. We had a really good last-day meeting of the year with all the committee. And we had the routine of the report given by staff. There was no item that we took action. And also Mayor Roger and I spoke a little bit about the experience that we had when we went to Coke 27th, which was a little bit appreciated. And yeah, that was all I had to report for Sonoma Clean Power. I'm going to turn to Sonoma County Transportation Authority.
Thank you, Mayor. We met via Zoom yesterday. The Board issued three resolutions of accommodation for outgoing directors Mark Landman, Sarah Glade Gurney, and Linda Fisher. We received a presentation for the Resilient State Highway 37 project. This will be a multi-year, multi-billion dollar project that will take place over the course of the next decade. The proposed funding will come from many different sources, including toll on the road. The main features will be getting the stretcher road between Novato and Sears Point above the floodline, the tidal restoration from Sears Point to Mare Island, including lengthening of the Tulane Creek Bridge to allow for better tidal flow permitting wetland restoration to the north of that bridge. The main issue along the highway 37 is it's a 21-mile stretch of road that takes 100 minutes to cross. So for many working people, that's a challenge. So there's some definite equity issues here. The new roadway will be a causeway with two lanes on both sides, allowing for HOV lanes and bus traffic from Solano to Marin. Majority of the folks that use that road actually live in Solano, and they come to Marin to work. And so, yeah. Then we took a look at the new Hearn Avenue interchange and bridge improvements that will bring two lanes in both directions on the bridge, protected bike lanes, excuse me, and six-foot pedestrian walkways on both sides of the bridge. If you've ever tried to walk across that bridge or bicycle, you'll notice that it's very, very narrow. So this will be a great uplift for that whole area, and it'll connect the two communities of Roseland and South Santa Rosa. So once again, a real equity issue. And this $45 million project, you know, will provide that. And so that is moving forward. On the RCPA side, we received a carbon sequestration report. We are 20% below our 1990 levels. That's the good news. But we need to get to 80% of our 1990 levels to achieve net carbon neutrality by 2030. Of course, RCPA has been focused on biologic rather than geologic sequestration through natural methods like soil management and compost applications. Finally, the Board voted to sign on to the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty, an international climate policy proposal for a new treaty to manage a global just transition away from coal, oil, and gas. It would complement the existing Paris Agreement and draw lessons from other treaties that have successfully managed threats of landmines, tobacco, chemical weapons, ozone-depleting chemicals, and nuclear weapons. This treaty is being strongly embraced and has some local jurisdictional support, most notably from Sebastopol. And the RCPA staff will be sending this out to all jurisdictions in Sonoma County in the near future. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next, we have LAFCO.
Yes, we had one item on our agenda, and it was about Northern Sonoma County Fire Protection District annexing CSA 40. As a lot of you have done reports about, fire consolidations is a big part of what LAFCO's been working on lately. And so this is another step to consolidate some of these disparate fire districts and areas around Sonoma County. I also had a zero-waste meeting today, so it's not on the agenda. But do you want me to do the report?
Of course.
Okay. What we talked about and did was approve the mission statement for zero waste and the pillars of the organization, what we are doing to move forward. We had a retreat to work on this, and today was the final thing to approve those.
Thank you. Then we're going to move to the public comments.
Communications.
Communications, please. Does anyone have any communication? Then we're going to move to public comments.
I only have comments for item 10B.
10B, okay. All right, now to the fun part. We're going to move to item 10A.
So this is our ceremony for the installation of elected City Councilmembers and selection of officers for the year 2023. And the first part of that is reflections on 2022, where we're going to show a highlight video from 2022.
Well, it's really emotional to see all the accomplishment. So I'm going to turn to our Councilmembers for comment.
Thank you very much. It's been a great year. I think many of you know, as I do, one of the great reasons why it's wonderful to serve in Runner Park is because of the people who work in Runner Park. A couple of examples are people in community services. When we were having that celebration this past fall, as all the fun things were going on, we had people who were running around just keeping the venue clean and immaculate, just those little teeny-tiny things organized by members of our staff. And I called to find out, it was Aaron Sherman, who's kind of the behind-the-scenes guy, taking care of all those little things. Public Works, one example that came to my mind was Saturday afternoon, a couple months ago, I got a text from somebody with some pretty ugly graffiti that had been posted on the fence along M-section wall. They sent a note and said, "What can be done about this on a Saturday afternoon?" I sent something to Tom Kelly, who sent something to Steve Tweedy, and within an hour and a half, that was all cleaned up. That's why we don't have graffiti in Runner Park. That's a wonderful thing. And then lastly, I just want to comment on our public safety team. We have some new neighbors in our neighborhood, and as Santa Claus was getting ready to come, I thought, I want to make sure they knew he was coming. So I went across the street and said, "I know you just moved in here, but Santa Claus is coming." They said, "He's coming?" Yeah, we're tracking him on Instagram. They knew right where he was. As they were coming around the corner, I thought this little seven-year-old boy was going to lift off the ground. He was so excited. That is community making. And I want to thank the public safety officers who were spending time dressing as Santa Claus, I'm sorry, Santa Claus's helpers, driving the fire trucks and driving the sleigh all around town, Tyler Rosen Treader and the other helpers, and people like Jeff Nix, who got dressed up as the Easter Bunny and rode all around town during the COVID to collect food. And Aaron Johnson, he's not here tonight. He's at Command Comp, but he comes and does community service all the time. And I really want to thank them for all the work they do on behalf of the city. I want to join those in saying thank you to Pam Stafford for all her contribution in the city, the special on City Council the past 16 years. She's going to be missed, and for Darren as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, at the top of the agenda, it says, "We care for our community by working together to build a better community for today and tomorrow." This action-oriented, forward-focused statement encapsulates the progress our city, that's resident staff and council, has made with our 10 strategic priorities. We started early in 2021 by strengthening the voices in our community and laying strong foundational pieces for all our strategic priorities, including homelessness, infrastructure, climate change, police relations and accountability, and financial health. All the while, having a great time doing it by creating memorable community experiences for all. In 2022, I'm grateful that this strong foundation gave us an opportunity to achieve many things, as you saw, and we should all be proud. Mayor Elward and Vice Mayor Rodriguez, you have both done an excellent job in guiding this council through its deliberations. But goals and policies are just words. It's the staff that transforms them into reality to the benefit of our residents, and they're to be acknowledged for their amazing efforts. It motivates me and inspires me daily to work side by side with a council that understands political will is a renewable resource. What I mean, in every instance, this council has acted with the best interest of the residents and the city top of mind. Finally, I'm grateful and humbled for our relationship with the indigenous peoples of this area, the coastal Miwok and the southern Poma. We honor and embrace the shared values that they have of harmony with nature, endurance of suffering, respect towards others, and a strong belief that people are inherently good and should be respected. It's through this compassionate, collaborative relationship that we've come to understand how truly blessed we are. I had the opportunity to spend some time with Darren yesterday, and you know how I feel, and I wish you well. And Councilmember Stafford, when I first came to this community, you welcomed me. We started together at SCAD, Sonoma County Adult and Youth Development, and I viewed you as a leader in this community. And it's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve alongside of you. I think you're an exemplary citizen and a great leader. And I wish you well in your retirement and whatever your next chapter is. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So I don't have anything prepared, but reflecting on the last year, I think the video, to me, shows the strength of this community. Besides the people is our employees. Almost every picture up there had somebody from our staff working. They're the ones who provide, when people clap, because streets were being paved or things were being done like that. That's our staff doing all that work. The Public Safety Department going out into the community, becoming friendlier with our community, which is what we are. We're the friendly city, and making that effort. And I think everything I think of when I think about working as a council member, I couldn't have done anything... of Rona Park, and to put our city on a local map, but not only local map, but on a global scale as well. We are advancing slowly, but surely, on this long and bumpy road, things are being done. Even when we did not see eye to eye on everything, we worked together on so many ways, and we brought many positive changes to our community. We had an extremely busy year and dealt with courage to bring so many things, changes in our city, our county, and our region. As a mayor and under my leadership, I made sure to play the role of a bridge between our city and our brothers and sisters of the Granton Coastal Miwok and Poma tribe, and I will continue this role for the better of this city and our brothers and sisters. I led the city to redistricting with transparency and inclusion, because our goal, as always, has been to empower our community and make sure that every voice is heard. We also made sure that our Labat Landing project was done right on time before the holidays, so that our unhoused population can have somewhere to call home. Everybody saw it was grand success, because everybody want to see the model that Rona Park have used to deal with this particular issue. During my term, I also worked to ensure a greater level of accountability with our Public Safety Department, and I greatly thankful for the chief, who came along and have been working day in and day out to make that to be done. We did continue investing in A and B section. All five of us here have worked together to make Rona Park the most attractive city in so many level. I know my kids are watching, and I have to tell them. I know for the past year mommy has been gone, but it's because it was to serve the people that you wanted me to serve, even though you are my number one. I hope you are proud of what I've done and what I'll continue to do. And for my colleague, thank you for allowing me to be myself and to bring the voices that might not been heard for a long time. Thank you for allowing me to make that room. And today, to have Rona Park being in the center of every legislator mouth, I am proud to say, Vinnie, Vinci, and you know the rest. There you go. On that, I will say, thank you to my constituent, Rona Park. You trusted me, and during this term, it was not easy. Thank you for allowing me to communicate with you and to be able to explain to you the thing that you might have not understood. Thank you for trusting me, and thank you for giving me that platform, and I hope you are proud of what has been done under my leadership. Thank you. Now let the fun begin. The first one, for our public comment, we have Jake McKenzie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Just on a point of order, I believe we're now talking about Agenda Item 10BA. Is that correct? A presentation to City Manager Darren Jenkins?
Yes, that's, we are now on item 10B.
Okay. And there's the city manager. Well, and also greetings to council members and council members to come and staff. I've known Darren for quite a long time now, and the first thing we need to point out is that he is upholding his tradition of wearing some of the most obnoxious Christmas ties that were ever brought to light in Sonoma County. So thank you, Darren, for not disappointing me tonight. I really appreciate that. The other thing about Darren is he's an engineer. I think he went to a university across the bay in Berkeley. That's correct, is it not, Yurabear? Right. He's also an articulate engineer. He's also a politically astute engineer, and as the years went by, and I can say this now, because I think of a lot of people in this room, I've probably worked, certainly when you arrived here, I started talking with you, and we had interesting offline conversations and watched as he went from city engineer, development services, assistant city manager, and then his greatest accomplishment, and I don't know if this is in your proclamation, and I believe the city manager to be is, in the audience, at least I was told she was going to be. I was told when I joined the council, and one of my first tasks that I never thought I would have to do was to negotiate a city manager's, or renegotiate a city manager's contract. And I was told by the League of California Cities, the average life of a city manager, average life being a city manager, not, is five to six years, and I've been checking up with other city managers, and I believe that statistic still holds true. How long have you been city manager, Darren? How long? See? Way above the average. And I think that's what all of us would agree. Darren Jenkins' service to this city, and particularly a city manager, has been way above average. And it was Christopher Wren who designed St. Paul's Cathedral in London, and I can't remember the Latin quote exactly, but it basically, be quiet, it basically says, "If you seek a monument, look around you." Well, you're actually in one of Darren Jenkins' friends, the City Hall, lit gold.
Thank you so much.
A recycled building.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, Darren, for your service. I've enjoyed it and look forward.
So I'm looking at the card here. I don't see anything else for the city manager. Is there anybody in the public that wanted to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Hey there, I put in a card, but, hi, I'm Barbara McKenzie. Greetings to all of you, and I just came down here, I'm your library representative on the Sonoma County Library Commission. I wanted to thank Darren, the city manager, for his service to the Library Commission. A couple of years ago, he served on an AgHOP committee to help us straighten out our retirement benefits for our employees for the Sonoma County Library. He did a yeoman's job and was extremely helpful to us in setting a good path for us, for our retirement benefits for the county, Sonoma County Library employees. So thank you, Darren, for that and all the other good work you've done for the city. I also wanted to thank Councilwoman Pam Stafford, for, she's been a great friend to the library, served as a docent on many art and photography shows, helped with the Friends of the Library book sales, was just down yesterday thanking all the volunteers at the holiday event. You both have been great, great public servants and also have played a part with our library, and so I want to appreciate that. And not to forget that the library is now open seven days a week, and come on down when you're time off and spend some time at the library. And everybody in the room should know that we're now open on Sundays from 1 to 5. So come on down. Thanks very much, and thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna have Jake McKenzie again for Pam Stafford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I'd known this was the way the agenda was going to be announced, I'd have combined my cards, so I apologize for double-carding you. I thought there would be a presentation to the city manager, and then a break, and then another presentation, but hey, I'm not always right. Not am I very modest, but that's all right. Pam Stafford and I served together for 14 years on this council. Couple of times, at least two times, I can't remember exactly, but she was my vice mayor. And I just have to say that the city council and the city itself is losing a great public servant, a woman of integrity, a woman who, with her husband Mark, raised her family here in Rona Park, and with whom it was a great pleasure to serve. I'm a well-known pack rat, at least to people who know me well. I have a chest full of articles from various newspapers over the past 25 years. This happens to be the Press Democrat, Wednesday, December 12, 2012. "Harmonious Council Elects Stafford Mayor." And I won't bore you by reading out the article, but there had been times in the past when the selection of mayor had not been harmonious, and I have the newspaper article that accuses me of being a liar by the then mayor, and therefore I did not become the mayor that particular year. But enough of me. I think the point here is that Pam Stafford's service on this council, and it has been previously noted by your colleagues, has been one of integrity, has been one of working together, of recognizing the role of staff here. And so it's my great honor to say thank you for your collegial behavior on the council. Thank you for your friendship, and thanks for all that you have done for the city of Rona Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Robin Thompson.
Hello, my name's Robin Thompson. I live in the S section. I'm a 22-year resident of Rona Park. I'd just like to take a minute to thank the outgoing council for its accomplishments and direction-setting over the last two years, and to express my appreciation and hopes for the incoming council. It was the great American philosopher Yogi Berra who said, "If you don't know where you're going, you'll end up someplace else." Two years ago, the council set forth 10 strategic areas of focus, providing real-world targets and a template for getting there. They knew where they were going. In looking back at the progress made, it's clear the hard work they put in on those focus areas is paying off. I think we can be particularly proud of how they've addressed the complex issue of homelessness with clarity, firmness, and compassion. And recognition is in order that the new downtown has continued to move forward despite a huge raft of obstacles, most of them unexpected and beyond local control. The 2023 addition to the council has big challenges but great potential. The diversity of this group is an important strength, not just gender or ethnicity, but in their background, personal experiences. I also wanted to thank Councilwoman Pam Stafford for, she's been a great friend to the library, served as a docent on many art and photography shows, helped with the Friends of Library book sales, was just down yesterday thanking all the volunteers at the holiday event. You both have been great, great public servants and also very, have played a part with our library, and so I want to appreciate that. And, and not to forget that the library is now open seven days a week. And come on down when you're time off and spend some time at the library. And everybody in the room should know that we're now open on Sundays from 1:00 to 5:00. So come on down. Thanks very much, and thank you Barbara.
Thank you. We're gonna have Jake McKenzie again for Pam Stafford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I'd known this was the way the agenda was going to be announced, I'd have combined my cards. So I apologize for double-carding you. I thought there would be a presentation to the city manager and then a break and then another presentation, but hey, I'm not always right. Not am I very modest, but that's all right. Pam Stafford and I served together for 14 years on this council. Couple of times, at least two times, I can't remember exactly, but she was my vice mayor. And I just have to say that the city council and the city itself is losing a great public servant, a woman of integrity, a woman who, with her husband Mark, raised her family here in Roanoke Park, and with whom it was a great pleasure to serve. I'm a well-known pack rat, at least to people who know me well. I have a chest full of articles from various newspapers over the past 25 years. This happens to be the Press Democrat Wednesday, December 12th, 2012. Harmonious Council Elects Stafford Mayor. And I won't bore you by reading out the article, but there had been times in the past when the selection of mayor had not been harmonious. And I have the newspaper article that accuses me of being a liar by the then mayor, and therefore I did not become the mayor that particular year. But enough of me, I think the point here is that Pam Stafford's service on this council, and it has been previously noted by your colleagues, has been one of integrity, has been one of working together, of one of recognizing the role of staff here. And so it's my great honor to say thank you for your collegial behavior on the council. Thank you for your friendship, and thanks for all that you have done for the city of Roanoke Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Robin Thompson.
Hello, my name's Robin Thompson. I live in the S section, I'm a 22-year resident of Roanoke Park. I'd just like to take a minute to thank the outgoing council for its accomplishments and direction-setting over the last two years, and to express my appreciation and hopes for the incoming council. It was the great American philosopher Yogi Berra who said, "If you don't know where you're going, you'll end up someplace else." Two years ago, the council set forth 10 strategic areas of focus, providing real-world targets and a template for getting there. They knew where they were going. In looking back at the progress made, it's clear the hard work they put in on those focus areas is paying off. I think we can be particularly proud of how they've addressed the complex issue of homelessness with clarity, firmness, and compassion. And recognition is in order that the new downtown has continued to move forward despite a huge raft of obstacles, most of them unexpected and beyond local control. The 2023 addition of the council has big challenges but great potential. The diversity of this group is an important strength, not just gender or ethnicity, but in their background, personal experiences, and individual perspectives. They reflect the totality of this community, which is an important factor in seeing that no one is left behind. I just add that in my experience, they're all good people, and that's something to be appreciated in these divisive times. I look forward to working with them and seeing what's next. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Royce.
Julie Royce, W Section, District 2. So I stand here today to say my heartfelt thank you to everyone on the outgoing council, to Darren, and to the entire city staff. You have all done such an amazing job. Mayor Elwards, thank you. I would also like to thank our vice mayor, Rodriguez, and also Willie Lanners. I would also love to welcome our incoming city council members. Congratulations. You have big shoes to fill, but I'm very, very hopeful. Two years ago, I sat at home due to the pandemic, and I was on the phone with someone I called my progressive mom. And we were so hopeful. Last year, we sat in the front row together and we cried several times. So the final thing I would like to do is to honor Chris Meyer and all other residents and our family members who have passed this year for their dedication to this great city. If we could just take a moment of silence for her and for all of our family members, community members, and loved ones who are no longer with us today, but that are absolutely looking down with so much pride. I know she would have something extremely blunt to say today. So you could all imagine some sentence in your mind and think of her. And lastly, again, thank you so, so, so much. Truly, it's been a wonderful, wonderful year.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Olaf.
Lisa Olaf, Roanoke Park resident, as well as the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. I just want to thank the outgoing council for all your hard work. I really appreciate the support and partnership with the chamber. I know I can always support, count on you guys to be at our events. Thank you Mayor Elward for always coming to the ribbon cuttings. It's so important to our new businesses to see you there and to see our city staff there. Thank you Darren for the partnership as, seven and a half years now that I've been with the chamber, know Darren personally through kids that grew up together. So thank you all for what you do, we appreciate the partnership. And then the city departments, we couldn't do what we do at the chamber without the support of community services. We just had a huge, successful holiday light celebration. Thank goodness we moved it down to the community center complex. We had Plan B where we can go inside because of the rain. Hopefully next year we'll have, not rain, we'll be able to be outside again. Huge thanks to Tom Kelly who loves Christmas and put on more than a thousand lights on that huge tree in front of the sports center, made it look really festive. So once again, thank you for the partnership, looking forward to continuing to partner with all of you.
Thank you. Sorry, I, um... Thank you. And now we're gonna move to, actually, yes, we're gonna, we have something. Sorry Darren, I went behind your back. So, I, I have to say, when you get into politics and you have to talk to the city manager, you have to feel welcome. And Darren, you have been welcoming us, you welcomed us with open arms. You showed us what we needed to know, and you spoke to us, you had that Darren look when things doesn't go well there, you have that stare. And, and this was like, sorry, I am being emotional, not because, you know, it is a sad thing, but it's a good thing, because you have been a leader for not only our staff, but for us as well. You have helped us to be better politicians and really help Roanoke Park. So this proclamation is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Roanoke Park to city manager Darren Jenkins on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Darren Jenkins will retire after 19 years of loyal service to the city of Roanoke Park on December 30th, 2022. And whereas Mr. Jenkins began his career with the city of Roanoke Park in a civil engineer and advanced to the position of city engineer, public work director, engineer director, development service director, assistant city manager, and later city manager to the position he holds today. And whereas Mr. Jenkins has brought a new level of professionalism and fiscal responsibility to the organization during his tenure as city manager. And whereas the city has achieved significant milestones during Mr. Jenkins' tenure, including winning numerous awards for customer services and businesses friendliness, recreating leadership Roanoke Park, negotiating an agreement to mitigation the impact of the casino, purchasing the site for the downtown Roanoke Park, opening Sunrise Park or Weatherfield, Twin Creeks Park, and Frederick's Park, building the Westside Fire Station, building a LEED Gold Certified Green City Hall, implementing longstanding development plan for University District Willow Glen and Sommo Village, creating of the, over 550 affordable housing units in eight projects, reducing retiree medical liabilities from $46 million to $2 million, and paving of $26 million on pension liability, improving police accountability and communication and community relation, and becoming an organization that listens to its residents and responds to their concerns. And whereas Mr. Jenkins has served the city with excellence, his leadership and presence will be missed. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Jackie Elward, as mayor and on behalf of the city council of the city of Roanoke Park, to hereby extend appreciation to Darren Jenkins for 19 years of service to the city of Roanoke Park and wish him the best of luck in the next chapter of his life. Duly and regularly proclaim this 13th day of December, 2022.
Uh, no, we have one more. On item 7B.
Vice Mayor?
Well, sometimes the mayor asks if the recipient wants to say anything.
Yes, please.
So I want to just thank my wife Dia for coming down to the, to the council meeting, and it's been a wonderful partnership. I couldn't have done this without you. And we try to keep like work and home separate. And I think we're doing a good job because she asked me tonight, probably my 600th council meeting, she said, "Hey, what time are council meetings?" When, when we moved to Roanoke Park 19 years ago, we never could have even imagined what a wonderful experience we would have here, raising our kids. This is such a nurturing community for families and children. It's just absolutely wonderful. You know, Han Elementary School, Lawrence Jones Middle School, Expeditionary Learning Technology High School, my kids went to that, and we just had a wonderful time. I've learned so much from our community, my friends and colleagues at the city, the council, and even the city attorney. If I tried to put into words the gratitude that I feel for you, it'll, it would be a three-hour speech. So I want everyone to relax, settle into your seats. Here we go. You know, thanks for the memories, stay friendly Roanoke Park.
Okay, I guess I'm up next. So I have the extreme honor of presenting council member Pam Stafford with a gift on behalf of the city and the council members for your 16 years of very dedicated service to our city, including three terms as a mayor, and that's between 2006 and 2022. A few other accomplishments that I wanted to share with the public who might not know is that within those 16 years, Councilwoman Stafford navigated the city through the 2008 financial crisis. She helped in adopting plans for major developments such as University District Willow Glen and helped annex them into our city. She served on LAFCO for over 12 years, passed two successful revenue measures, passed a 20-year extension of our urban growth boundary, built the city center plaza, and started Party on the Plaza, weekly Friday night market. And she also was part of building this hall that we're in now, which is LEED Gold Certified, environmentally friendly. And she also reduced the city's debt by $80 million. Those are just a few, very few things that Councilwoman Stafford has done for our incredible city. And I don't think that there are enough thank yous from myself, from our fellow colleagues, from staff, and from the residents for all your service, along with many other things you do outside of city council. So thank you so much for your service. It is beyond appreciated.
So it's my turn to say something. As Samantha was reading that, the first thing that kept popping into my head is, I didn't do anything by myself. Everything that was done in this city has been a joint effort with everybody helping, and even saying, "She did this and she..." I did serve on LAFCO, that, I did that by myself. But all, the other accomplishments that have happened in the city as I've served here have definitely been a group effort. Everybody on the council has been working, has worked on this and done it. The staff over the years have done it, so I'm, I'm just very proud to have been part of it. I want to thank my friends and my family, my daughter's here tonight, thank you for being here. Makes it very special.
Okay, it's me again. Now we're moving on to 10C, which is our presentation to Mayor Jackie Elward for her year as mayor in 2022. And a few of her accomplishments that I'd like to share is switching our city to 100% clean power, helped ban gas stations, hired our city's first sustainability manager, bought the city's first electric vehicles, purchased 30-acre downtown site, paid down pension debt by over $26 million, helped 36 families attain affordable in-housing Willow Glen. She also helped celebrate the city's 60th birthday, celebrate our first-ever 4th of July RP Jubilee, opened Le Bath Landing so 70 people wouldn't spend their winter in the streets. She personally adopted a room at Le Bath Landing. She led with empathy and broke the ice as the first global majority woman mayor in the 60-year history of Roanoke Park. So there are also not enough thank yous for the community that you have led, for the doors you have opened and maintained open for others like myself. And you have also represented this city in not only local government but global, and continue to do so. You in fact were just at Washington DC representing our city. Thank you so much for all that you've done, for the confidence you've had in me as your
Thank you so much for all that you've done, for the confidence you've had in me as your vice mayor, for your guidance and your leadership. And I think it's safe to say, this isn't it. You're gonna, you're still here. We can't thank you enough for all that you've done and the many invisible boundaries that you have broken. So thank you.
I have to say, as a person of color, it's not always easy to break the barriers. I have to really hold myself together because earlier one of you mentioned Chris Meyer. Chris believed in me. She always encouraged me and called me at night when I was thinking twice of continuing. Being Black, not only here in Roanoke Park but in the county, we always have to prove that we can do the job. Despite what we do, there's always hesitation, people doubting the work. But as you can see, this work, like Councilmember Stafford said, it's not my doing, but a team work. I really thank the city of Roanoke Park and all the constituents out there for giving me this platform and to, for bringing the voice of minorities in this city in a way that's never been before. And of course, this woman that came from the Democratic Republic of Congo that barely spoke English and today has become the face in the minority, not only minority, but in the faces of our children. Last night, there was a little boy, a second grader, who wrote about government and came to me and insisted to his mom to take a picture with me. And right that moment, I really understood that children are watching us and the way we lead is the way our children will respond when they get older. And I purposely made my leadership to be one that will unify people and empower those that don't have that space. And even though we always talk about white, Black minority, we have the best ally. Gerard? Thank you. And again, Willie Donatus was my first vice mayor. And I have to thank him for the work that he did while on the council. Brother, we did it. Tonight, we will do it again and we will continue. Your work is seen and everybody sees that minorities can also do things. We make it happen. And I am glad that you were here with us and now I had a wonderful vice mayor that will continue this work. So thank you. Now to the fun part that everybody's been waiting for. We are gonna invite our new council member-elect.
So we're moving to item ten C.
So item ten C is installation of council members-elect, administration of oaths of office, and presentation of certificates of election. Hey Sylvia. Yeah, just wait a second. They give us a piece of cake.
Hi, Sylvia Rodriguez. I was living on a private video Roanoke Park State of California certified by the City Council of the Video Roanoke Park Amendment thirteen twenty-two. The Dr. Resolution twenty-two that under declared the results of the municipal election that was placed on the eighth day of the latter twenty-two pursuant to the California election. Samantha Rodriguez was selected council member for District One. Emily Sandmore was elected council member for District Two. And Susan Hollingsworth Adams was elected council member for District One. Please raise your hand. The execution of this oath is required by Article twenty, Section three of the Constitution of the State of California for the office of To you, Samantha Rodriguez, Emily Sandmore, and Susan Hollingsworth Adams, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of occupation, and that you will, well, faithfully discharge to duty upon which you are about to.
I do.
I'm gonna have each of you please sign your office and Councilmembers Rodriguez. Here's your certificate of elections. And then for Sandmore, District Two. Councilmember Hollingsworth Adams.
All right, next, we're gonna move to the selection of council officers for two thousand and twenty-three considering of, of nomination and selecting of mayor and vice mayor. I'm gonna nominate Samantha Rodriguez as the mayor.
Second. Second.
Making, making history one more time. And before moving, we will need to get some public comments. Madam Clerk?
I don't have any cards. Mayor?
What? Nobody want to say anything? Julie Royce?
Congratulations from everyone in this room and everyone at home. We know you're gonna do a fabulous job. We are so proud of you and we just want to thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John McIntigard. I am here representing IBEW Local five-five-one. As their business manager, I'm so, so proud that I live here in Roanoke Park too, to see this, to be part of this. You know, just to be part of the room here tonight, I am moved emotionally. It was said earlier that you've got big shoes to fill. Councilmember Sandmore, how does that sound, huh? You have incredible leaders left and right of you. Lean on them. Councilmember Hollingsworth Adams, you are now the senior member on the board. Congratulations. I think this is fantastic for Roanoke Park. I think it's fantastic for everybody. Congratulations, Councilmember Rodriguez, on your election. I, I'm so excited. So excited as, you know, somebody that lives here, somebody that, that thrives in this county, you know, because of the constituents in this county, because of the leadership, you know, that we witnessed here. So I can't thank you enough for the job you guys have done. Thank you.
We got a motion for the mayor and we're gonna go for the motion for the vice mayor.
Yes, I'd like to, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, is there other nomination for the mayor?
None.
Okay, we're gonna move to the vice mayor nomination.
We're gonna do a vote?
We can't do both at the same time, no? Okay. I was too excited about it. Come on. All right. Madam Clerk?
The following vote is to confirm the nomination of Councilmember Vice Mayor Rodriguez as mayor for the year of two thousand and twenty-three. Councilmember Judice?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandmore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Elward?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion passes by five-zero.
All right, next, we're gonna move to the vice mayor.
Thanks. I would like to move that we promote Councilmember, Councilwoman Susan Hollingsworth Adams to vice mayor.
I'll second that.
I second that.
I need a second, though.
I'll second that. You got a few. I don't think we could hear over the wonderful applause.
So, public comment?
I don't, oh, I'm sorry.
We have one.
Tim Smith, Roanoke Park. I am proud to talk about the time that I've known Susan Hollingsworth Adams and I'm very pleased that she'll be in leadership in Roanoke Park. Two thousand and four, before I was elected to City Council.
A little bit louder.
Two thousand and four, before I was elected to City Council, Susan and I served on the Planning Commission. She served with distinction on the Planning Commission for many years. I think she's gonna be a fine addition to the leadership team. I'm proud to consider her a friend. As long as I have a few moments and I didn't take the time to do it before, Darren, congratulations. Pam, congratulations. And among the things I'm very proud about is that I was part of what happened with this building and it's really great. And thanks for the eighty million dollars that you saved the citizens of Roanoke Park over the many years ahead. I'm, I'm very, very pleased by that. Congratulations to the leadership team, which I expect will be elected soon.
We have Mr. Olaf.
Thank you. Mark Olaf, resident of Roanoke Park. Susan, I've known you for twenty-plus years. You've helped me a lot in the past through my election to school board. I serve as your Planning Commissioner. You're going to make a great leader on this council. Samantha, you'll be lucky to have her. You're the longest-serving senior member here, the last fully-elected Roanoke Park City Councilperson. I couldn't be happier for you. Congratulations, Susan. And Darren, we've known each other a long time. I didn't speak earlier. I echo Tim. Hopefully we'll get to dinner sometime, talk about our kids instead of the city.
All right, more people decided to talk, finally.
Hello, everyone. I'm Darlene Sandoval. I'm a proud resident of District Two, so welcome, Emily. I am so excited to have you on board. But I am here to thank Jackie, our mayor, our beloved mayor. I wish I would have written something and had something prepared, but then we would have been here for an entire hour. So I think I only have three minutes. I just want to thank you for everything you have done for our city and I, everything that I know you will continue to do for all the children, all the residents, all the women, all the minorities, all the allies that you have inspired and will continue to inspire. I can't imagine how difficult it is to campaign, to run for city council. But as a woman, as a woman of color, there simply are no words. So thank you for your courage. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for that loud voice that represents all of us. And Samantha, congratulations.
And I, just like Darlene said, my name's Maria Sandoval and you know how hard I've worked to see this city council here. I'm too emotional, but I'm so happy that I'm making history. And yes, thank you for all the work that you've all done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk?
Is there any other nomination? Just, just confirm it?
Just those two.
The following motion is to confirm Councilmember Hollingsworth Adams as the vice mayor for the city of Roanoke Park for the year two thousand and twenty-three. Councilmember Judice?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandmore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez? Mayor Elward?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion passes by five-zero.
Congratulations.
Okay. Sorry, I'm getting a little aggravated here. We will move on to 10E, Vision for 2023. I start out with the mayor's comments and my vision is just to keep breaking the barriers that we're breaking, as we have done now with our first female black mayor and now the city's first Latina mayor. And again, gracias a mi comunidad for believing in me, trusting me, and your confidence in being a voice to be heard, not only for Latinos in this community, but for District One, for students, and for women. And, well, they say I'm young, so, young people, too. I look forward in 2023 to also work with our first female city manager, who happens to be Latina as well. And like I said, to continue breaking barriers and keeping Rona Park on the global, global level, so, thank you, everybody, and I'll turn to my council members for comments.
I am relieved. I have to say, it feels good to be in this environment and I am proud of this council. Samantha, Mayor Samantha, Mayor Rodriguez. I know you would do great. You will be a model. Now, you are sitting in that chair, all these little people that are there watching you. So the light is on you. And I believed in you since day one and I know you would do great. Vice Mayor. Sorry, Adams, you know, I can't pronounce the other name and I can butcher it. I know there's a lot of learning curve ahead and I know that the city is in good hand and a lot of people are watching you here. And I know it's gonna be a power team starting 2023. You know there will be challenges will come, but never, never forget, this is not about neither of us, it's about the people that are in this room and outside watching us. We are working for them. And as of for tonight, I would say, history is once again made and I am proud to be on this team. What do you think, council member? Alright, so I'm gonna stop there.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations again, and congratulations to Vice Mayor Hollingsworth Adams. You are now in a leadership position after four years and it was an honor to nominate you. As we say goodbye to our dear city manager and welcome the new city manager, this transition comes at a very important juncture in our city's development. As we get closer and closer to building out our general plan, start construction on our downtown, and continue to make progress on our other strategic priorities, we will need to stay focused on our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and our threats. I look forward to our goal-setting session in February, as this will give us the time to review those goals with our new city manager. As the country faces the challenges of inflation and a looming recession, what can we do from an economic development standpoint to make sure we have a strong local economy with opportunity for our local residents and business owners? Business retention and attraction in particular in our priority development area must be an important component to our strategy. I mentioned our relationship to our partners to the West. We also have a great partner in the East, right? Sonoma State University. The university is going through a renaissance. What can we do to support them and collaborate with them? In closing, Rona Park is the most unique community in Sonoma County, a geographically compact and centrally-located city that is financially sound and has the will to build community, understands the need to be good custodians of the land, and recognizes we are a college town. Our future is bright and we must work hard to keep it that way by creating opportunity for all and not leaving anyone behind. Thank you.
Darren, you wanna tell me how to do this? On your way up. I'm so happy to be here in this seat this evening. It's not a spot that I pictured myself 22 years ago when I moved to Rona Park to attend Sonoma State University. It's not even a place I pictured myself a year ago as I was raising my then-four-year-old and seven-year-old children with my husband Kelly, who is a teacher here in town as well. But I've really, in parenting, become extra immersed in our community. It's just inevitable, when you have kids, you go places you didn't think you were gonna go and you see things that you thought you knew from a new perspective. And that really compelled me to want to become more involved in our city. And so, when I learned of the opportunity to represent my district directly, it just seems like an amazing opportunity for somebody else. I'll be honest, I just, I mean, you know, and I think that is the funny thing about local leadership is you just, you hope that somebody who shares your values and your ethics and your hopes and dreams for your community will step up and they will represent us all and do it well with transparency and integrity and fiscal responsibility and, you know, all of these things. And I, trust me, I looked for that person. I really did, I asked around and, you know, knowing in my heart what I wanted to see for this seat right here, I just, I didn't find that person. And then a postcard came in the mail and, yeah, I'm gonna tell you this, a postcard came in the mail from the city of Rona Park and it said, "Do you love your city?" And I had it sitting on my desk and it sat there for a few days and I was like, well, I already know what I'm looking for in my representative for the city. And then, you know, with reality of raising a family, I didn't put that beautiful flyer in the recycling. And then I dug it out of the recycling and I just, I couldn't ignore that calling in my heart to, to serve in a way that I have not yet served our community. So, I want to thank you all. Wow, running for any position, I mean, is, it's a lot of work and there's a lot of sacrifices and nobody sacrificed more than my family. My husband does so much laundry. And so many dishes and, you know, I just have to call it out because it is not possible to do this without support from others. And so I just wanna thank my family and my beautiful children. This city, you know, it is a great place to live. I've grown up here and I've learned a lot in the last 22 years and I really, I want that so much for you and for other young people in this community. I think it's really important that we support all members of our community, especially those who don't have a voice or don't feel like they have a seat at the table. And secondly, I wanna thank my other family and that would be Strauss Family Creamery because they have been so supportive and so flexible with all of this campaigning and just a wonderful support over the last decade. You know, my family believes in me and it really means a lot to me that, that my work family does as well. So, that, I do wanna thank everybody that supported my campaign and volunteered and, you know, did such odds and ends things to take care of the behind-the-scenes work and, yeah. I'll probably stop there. But thank you all.
I would like to, I would like to invite Marcella to come up for just a minute, just come up to the front of the room here, right here. Those of you who are... This is Marcella Piedra, she's our new city, well, I call her our city manager in waiting. So if you get a chance to say hello to her at the end of the evening, we're so glad you're here, thank you. I just wanna read a little poem, it says, "I love a finished speaker, I really truly do. I don't mean one who's polished, I just mean one who's through." And with that, I thank you all for coming tonight and look forward to a wonderful year.
And with that, this meeting's adjourned.